Meeting by clicking on the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968. With the conference ID 87054154147. Passcode 478190. If you're on the phone, you press star nine to raise your hand to be called on and star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. All right, first up, we have an introduction of a new commissioner. Sandra Kayapi. Would you like to say anything or tell us anything about you or? Anything like that?
Thank you Chair. Good evening everyone. My name is Sandra Kayapi and I have lived in this city for five years, three months and two days. And I absolutely love this city. Before I moved here, I lived in Menlo Park and Sacramento. But I moved here because I got a job with the county San Mateo at the health administration. And I currently work as a health services manager within the public health and policy and planning department. And I have been a beneficiary of the events set up by the parks and recreation department. I absolutely love community. I like going out and meeting new people and making friends. And I also love the parks. I love watching the sunrise at Ryder Park and the sunset and it's quite amazing. So I feel like this city has given me so much and I would like to give back and I'm really happy to be here and to serve.
Welcome. Thank you. All right, item two. Approval of the regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? No, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the June minute?
So moved second.
A second. Can we have a roll call for vote?
I would be happy to. Chair Womack. Commissioner Massey.
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayapi? Vice Chair Womack?
Aye.
Thank you, motion has passed.
Great. Okay, next up, we're gonna have general public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of fifteen minutes. And we can read the rest if there's anyone here. Is there anyone online?
There's nobody online at this time.
And we'll close public comment session and move on to item three. California State Parks Pass Grant Presentation. Informational. We have Jonathan Jung Supervising Library Assistant and Rita Marin Supervising Librarian to do a presentation for us.
Yeah, it's okay if I stand, correct?
Yes, of course.
I'm just so used to standing when I do presentations. It's better for me. So we were already introduced, so I just wanna say good evening to everyone. It is a great pleasure to present this presentation to the commission as well as any of the public that happen to be watching at this moment. As we mentioned, we are from San Mateo Public Library. We're from the main library, which is on Third Avenue. And here to basically give you a presentation on a great opportunity that was awarded to the library as well as the city of San Mateo. And seeing as I grew up in San Mateo, I'm also of great pleasure to announce that this is something that can benefit our residents here too. So before I actually talk about the grant, I kinda wanna back it up a little bit. Talk about the State Parks Pass Program that we are that we are involved with. So back last year in February 2002, we're let know that by the California State Library as well as the California State Parks. That the libraries, all the libraries in the state of California would be able to provide access to our residents through the California State Library Parks Pass Program. And what that is, is we have at the library, at all of our libraries, not only San Mateo ones, but all the ones, all the public libraries, excuse me, in California. We were given access to day passes, which give you access to most of the state parks. There are some that are not participating as well as those that are participating. And this pass is basically a day pass pays for your parking, doesn't include camping or anything like that. It's just, it's just again, a day pass. So we've had these passes available to the public since around this time period, so about a year, approximately half. So. Next slide. So here's a example of what the pass looks like. It's basically a hang tag, you know, when you check it out. You can check it out for three weeks. In that three weeks, you can go to as many participating parks as you want. There's no limit. As well. The pass is not renewable. You know, of course, you know, if you check out books, they are renewable. The passes are not renewable. But of course, you can always return the pass and then check it out at a later date if you like. And we do have a number of passes that are holdable. So if none are available at the time that you arrive at the library, you can put a hold on one and hopefully you'll get it pretty soon. Because there are a lot of, a lot of passes in our system at the moment. So our holds list has been very much under control. Very few people on the list right now. So with that said, once we, once we got started with this program. The California State Library as well as the California State Parks. They offered two rounds of grants. The first round was, was rather, was I think what they would probably consider a pilot round. They offered a certain amount of funds to certain libraries. Actually, I was not even aware there was a first round to be, to begin with, so I think they tried to limit that. But in the second round, they basically offered all libraries up to, if I remember correctly, seventy K was the, was the limit to be able to use the passes for things like supplies and program, which I'll go into, which actually Rita and I will go into later. So the passes, the passes program as well as the grant program were mainly focused on getting people out of the house and into the parks. You know, as you know, post pandemic, you know, a lot of people, and I think this kinda bears out with our patronage at the library. Our patronage has been, has been reduced by quite a bit since, since the pandemic. And I think that to address that, the California State Library as well as again, the park system. They wanted people to get out more to experience the parks, to, you know, make memorable experiences and to be stewards of nature as well as parks themselves. So I used to be a teacher and I was always told, don't read off of your PowerPoint slides. But I'm gonna do it this time because I know it's hard to read probably from where you guys are. So this is directly from the State Parks website. It says, "Research shows that spending time in the outdoors is associated with better mental and physical health and that many Californians face barriers to accessing their parks, including proximity, not feeling welcome due to language barriers, economic barriers, and not being exposed to the outdoors." "California has a wealth of state parks and many public libraries are likely within driving distance of one. By reducing barriers to park access and partnering with entities such as public libraries, the state can help more Californians explore outdoors and gain the benefits of our parks." Sorry, it's an animation. So, so the things that kinda stand out to me right here are reducing barriers. Now, at the library, you know, you know, one of the big, big goals of the library is to give people access to information, materials. And so I think that's where, that's where the Parks Pass Program comes in, that we're kind of doing the same kind of things. And also producing outcomes, you know. We want people at the library, we want people to be lifetime learners, you know. To be able to, again, by getting access to materials as well as access to information through our librarians. We hope that people can enrich their lives. And likewise, I kinda feel like with this program, we're also doing that. And then the next is another animation. So with that. One of the requirements of this grant was to identify community partners. And obviously, there, we have a lot of partners out here. But of course, we, we want to stay within our family. We're here to benefit, you know, mainly the city of San Mateo residents. So we identified our Parks and Rec Department to, to help us with, with this grant and slide. And this grant, I should say, we applied, of course, to the grant and we were awarded it. It was forty K, it's a forty K grant. And these funds will go into things like supplies. The first thing we're working on right now, which is, this is actually my end of things. I, I work in the circulation department at the library. So right now, we're putting together kits, which are basically backpacks with a number of items that people can use to enjoy the parks. So for example, things like guidebooks. They can check out things like binoculars, it comes with a hiking guide, all, all these kinds of fun things, okay? Some things that people can use while they're on their adventure and things that they can use possibly in future adventures. So again, trying to get people to not only visit a park just once, but again, to be stewards of the parks, stewards of nature as well as lifetime learners. So this is the end that I'm working on. And then Rita, you can address the programming end of things and you probably, you can probably just say, say.
Yeah, so as John said, part of what we're doing is providing an experience for our users, so they can check out these backpacks. And then John, you know, he's done a lot of work into putting into kind of backpacks. It's not just the backpack like you see there, but you know, also a baby carrier backpack, so you can invite the whole family. With partnering with the Parks and Recs, one thing we wanted to do was we wanted to reach to underserved communities. And one in particular that I really feel strongly about is the senior community. We want them to be able to also enjoy and partake of this great option that we have. It's free. How can we make it more accessible to them? So we also, within that frame, along some of the things that might apply more to the seniors, we'll have things like hiking poles, a little, a chair that you can unfold and sit when you're tired, the big magnifying glass, large print stuff. Things that might, you know, benefit them as well with their experience along with other things. So that's kinda why we wanted, that's one of the areas we wanted to partner with. So as far as programming, what we're looking at right now is we're looking at partnering, right now, we're partnering with the senior center and we're going to be working with them.
Still done.
Yeah, so, so we're partnering with them. We're actually in the midst of developing it. They're gonna put out their next newsletter and it's, and they are working with us to provide a field trip for seniors. So it's gonna be their first, I believe, their first post-pandemic trip for the seniors. And we're going, and we're working on that now as far as finalizing the location and the event. So that's gonna, that's slated for October, mid-October as the first one. And then we hope to have another one in the spring. But along with that, we will also work on having programming at the library. So having interpretive rangers come and speak on different topics at the library, whether it's again, again, focus at the seniors to, you know, how can they best prepare and plan for a trip out? What issues might they want to consider that they may not have thought of? Perhaps which local locations are the best for them to enjoy as far as driving, mobility, access, things of that nature? But we can also hopefully at some point, we could possibly also do some family programming. Just a little side note, when we did the grant, we didn't purpose, we purposely did not include children's programming because our, our children's department was down to a single librarian. Now we're at full staff, so we're hoping between now and the end of our, our grant period, we might be able to create some more family-friendly programming with their expertise. So those are things we're kind of looking at. Also, I mean, ideally, we would like to also reach other minority communities. It just depends if we can get these groups to come and speak. There are different organizations in the Bay Area. There is a Latino hiking backpacking group. That would be great if they could come and speak, but it's just a matter of getting them and them being willing to come to us. So it's kind of a negotiation we're working on. But those are the kind of things we're working on and it's an evolving promotion. It's the first time John and I have done this, so we're learning along the way. And we're just hoping that we believe what we're gonna produce with the backpacks will be something very enjoyable. And we'll get more information out to the public once we have them ready to go.
Great, thank you. This is very exciting. So we'll do questions first. Why don't we start this way? We'll give you a little taste of it. Sarah, do you have any?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Vice Chair Womack. And thank you both for this presentation. You sort of alluded to the idea that you were about to kind of launch the program. Can you clarify the timeline of this? Because this is all great news. I just, I was like, wow, when is this happening? Is this already happening? So it wasn't exactly clear on the timeline.
Right. Well, this is a one-year grant, so we are kind of moving pretty quickly on it. Although, you know, I would say right now, on the supply end of things, I've received probably about eighty percent of what I want right now. Those in terms of the backpacks and whatnot. You know, my processing department has to work on them. You know, we have to do the barcoding and all that stuff, just like we do with all other library items. So we're hoping to launch within this month. I would say end of the month is the deadline I'm giving to folks. So yeah, we're hoping to have this available pretty soon.
And what are you relying on in terms of like kind of a marketing plan to get, I mean, it sounds like there are some things in place and you're hoping to some more ideas. And I, I want to say, I really appreciate the idea of trying to make sure that there's a type first group of people who are made to wear. But kind of what are the platforms you're using to?
Well, right now, we're just doing internal marketing, you know, which includes, you know, things like social media, you know, we have our own social media.
We have a monthly newsletter that goes out to both in Spanish and English. So that goes out to different communities who have signed up for it. We'll probably at that, at some point, it'll get into the city newsletter. We will send the information to Samantha Weigle and she'll put it in the city newsletter as well. As far as like the programs for the senior centers, we're working with the senior center and they're gonna be promoting it through their newsletters at their facilities as well. And they also have an email, I believe, list that they will send out the information for items that specifically apply to the seniors.
And also, we, the library has several cultural committees. And we've been reaching out to them to see, you know, what their needs are and, you know, whether they can, whether we can help them. And obviously, they can help us with helping marketing program a little bit too.
Um, I guess I would just, if I can offer some suggestions. Sam Michael does run the city's Nextdoor page. And I know there are some restrictions on what you can and cannot post, but it can be a platform for good. So that might be an option. And there are several town halls taking place in the fall around the San Mateo general plan update and that could be a good opportunity to promote activity at the library, just because I think there'll be a lot of community members out. And so they're pretty opportune to be there as well. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Massey?
How many of the park passes do you have available to?
Do you mean available at the moment or?
Yeah.
Okay. The reason why I ask you at the moment is because we have ones in circulation now. And, you know, when you check out a backpack, the thing that we're working on, that will also include pass, a pass with your checkout. So what we have available now, we have approximately, if I remember correctly, forty-four amongst our locations. And we do have ones that are holdable, you know, which, you know, you can put a hold on just like a book or whatnot. And we do have these ones that we have in our quick pick collection, which are ones you can, basically, if you visit the library, if we happen to have one in our collection, you can check it out right then and there. They're not holdable actually. So we do have different ways of, for the community to access these passes.
And is, is that aspect of the program popular? I take it, the program you've been talking about with the backpacks and the outreach to the various groups are something that you're developing. But the pass program is something that you have had and that, and that is sort of up, is up and running now.
Yes.
Do you get a lot of takers?
Yeah, we, we, we collect statistics, quarterly statistics for the California State Library. And I've just been seeing the trend just going up. And anecdotally, I should say, you know, we started to offer these passes last year around, I think it was around April or so. Prior to that, the California State Library had made the general announcement that, hey, we're gonna start this, this program. It's coming soon. And I belong to several outdoor sites. And a lot of the members there know that I am, I work in a library. And I was inundated with messages like, I heard you guys are gonna have free passes. So before the program had even started, there was a considerable amount of demand. And I think, you know, now that I'm looking at the numbers, I see that that demand is definitely borne out to real-life interest in the passes.
That's great.
Yeah, there was an initial, when they first came out and every library got a certain number. There were such a request for them that they were all on hold and the state library and the state park system realized that they needed to provide more. So they said, did a second round and they gave us even more.
Yeah.
So they are keeping track of that and they, they do want to know, what's, what do they wanna know? Well, how many holds do you have so they can meet the need? So they, we have been getting more from the state.
That's very good.
Park system.
That's very good. That, that's great. I just wanna make sure I understood that that program, which I gathered, was already up and running.
Yes.
Versus, versus the great program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kayapi? I have a comment and a question, so I'm very excited about this program. I think it's really great. Particularly thrilled that you're organizing a field trip for the seniors. Have you made any decisions as to which parks you wanna take them to or to somebody that will be still in?
Yeah, so the first, the first one will be Pacific Estate Beach. It is a closer one. We're just trying to feel out, you know, how far we're, how long are people willing to be in a bus? Because we are near state parks, but we're not super near. You know, ideally, I would like to try and do something south of Half Moon Bay, one of those locations, things like that. But it does take longer to get there and get back. So we're gonna do this as kind of a pilot, how does it work? So it's Pacific Estate Beach. And we're hoping that there will be a historian for the beach, can tell us a little history. And then also there a ranger for the wildlife and flora that might be found in that location and hopefully a picnic. We're hoping to join up with the Pacifica seniors. So we're working with that. So it's a social event as well as getting outside and enjoying the parks.
Any other questions? Okay. The one, one that kind of comes to mind, and I know this is still sort of piloting it, but, I mean, I heard free pass, I got really excited. But I don't think it's really, should be for everyone, because, you know, some people can already go to parks. They're already visiting them, they can pay for them, they have no barriers. So is there any thought to how to sort of manage that, that it's, the free passes aren't going to people that really just already use the parks and don't have the barriers that we're looking to get over?
So I, I guess, I guess we can address that by, you know, again emphasizing that there are the two programs. So it's just essentially the pass program and the grant program. And I, and I think, you know, eventually, eventually at the end of the, at the end of the grant period, they will become one. You know, with the grant program, the supplies and everything, at least for the period of the grant, you know, I'm gonna try to, as much as I can, reserve these items for, especially like these programs that we're working on. Because the programs are really the core, to me, what I see as the core of the grant program itself. Because like you're saying, you know, we could offer whatever free stuff, I don't wanna say free, but, you know, items that can be checked out free of charge to folks. But it's really these kind of more like, how can I say it? Like these intangible experiences, you know, the pro, the programs, the historic, the historical aspects of it, the nature aspects of it, that kind of, kind of tie things together. So. I hope that answers your question.
I don't, yeah, as far as the park passes, I don't think we can dictate who to get, unfortunately. We can't, we don't know everyone's social economic background and we haven't been, and that hasn't, and we have to go by what the state library tells us to do as far as this program. So we, the goal is to try and reach everybody. We do go and we talk about it at different outreach events that we go to, so we go different place. We will go to different parts of the city and we will talk about these programs. We do have currently some marketing materials in Spanish. We don't have any of the other languages yet, but we do have it in Spanish and we do try to make a point of reaching these communities. And we do do our best, but at the point of checkout, we can't dictate who gets what, unfortunately. But we do try to reach out to those underserving communities.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, sorry.
So I, I'm just clarifying. So the, the grant part is what you're talking about with the programs and the backpacks. And those are the ones where you're really looking for that community partner to do the program with. And then the passes is kind of a different system, it's just anything.
Yeah, yeah, passes, like anyone can check out.
Okay, great. For the backpack, the one thing that really came to mind was like a, like a brochure on like ticks and poison ivy, like that kind of thing that people who aren't used to going out in the woods might need to know. So if that's not on your list, maybe think about that one. Or maybe one of the programs where the
Right, yeah.
person comes to talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, those kinds of things. Is the fourth grade pass still happening? There's, there was some fourth grade pass.
Not through the city, I think that was a county initiative. There was a fourth grade, some fourth grade thing about either county, county parks maybe. It wasn't the state parks, I don't think. And I, and it wasn't, it was a San Mateo County library system, I think, was doing that program.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so that's totally separate.
Okay. Then, oh, the one that I thought for the marketing was, we, I mean, we're ending camps and we have huge, huge number of kids that have been using the camps and I don't know if there's any way that, you know, the Parks Department can help with that. Sending out that information anyway to all of our summer campers. So the question in there, which was hidden, so the, the, the timeline of this program, does it go through next summer?
Ends in June.
Ends in late May.
Late May, okay, so before the end of the school year, okay.
But, you know, again.
Spring break.
But again, we get to keep all the passes and supplies, so we can just supply, and we can create our own original program at that point. That's not necessarily focused, well, of course, we always, at the library, we always try to focus on underserved communities. But, you know, we don't have to necessarily focus on, on any particular partners or anything like that.
So I mean, once the grant ends, we still get to keep, we, we keep everything in circulation and we kind of build into that hopefully going forward. We can get the funding from the city that we can continue offering additional things.
I think this is a good partnership. Okay, I bled into question or comments, but is there any public, is there anyone on the line for a public comment on this item? There is not at this time. Okay. All right, we'll close public comment period and come back to the commission for any last comment about this item.
Commissioner Fields? Yeah, I'll just say, I think this is a great program. You know, I hope to see it out in the community and the only thing I thought of was, we were talking is to, I would love to see promotion to families at the King Center. That's not already in place, obviously, that would be a great place to, to kind of introduce the outdoors. And I, maybe even some promotion around kind of what's, what are the closest state parks? You started to mention that with the, the senior field trip, but whatever promotional materials, because I think sometimes people secure state park and they think they probably have to drive three or four hours and that's definitely not the case. So just, you know, maybe even saying like, what the five closest state parks are. You've probably thought about this already. But this is a great program and I'm excited to see where it will go and keep up the good work at the library. But this is a great program and I'm excited to see where it will go and keep up the good work at the library.
Commissioner Massey?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Fields. This is, this is a really wonderful program. I'm really glad that you all were able to come. I've lived here a long time and I've never heard of this program before. So I, I think that's, I think that's, that's great. Want to thank you for coming and bringing us into the, into the loop box. Interesting and fine idea.
I'd like to agree that this is a great program. Sharing this information. I would like to keep like updated and progress.
We stopped by the library sometime this month. There should be a display case.
Nice.
That we put it together so you can actually see it in a display case.
Probably tomorrow.
So it'll be in the lobby of the library. Come on by and you can see what it actually looks like. We couldn't bring them with us, but.
We can make it to one.
Yeah.
I'll second everything that says, sounds like a really great program. Very excited to see it happen. I love the MLK idea. I also thought about school libraries. It might be another place to advertise that out. And thank you. This is gonna be great. We'd love to hear how it goes. Okay, so no action for us on that one. So we'll move on to item four, memorial plaques for deceased dogs update. We have Ron Hafstik, the Parks and Landscape Manager for a presentation.
In twenty sixteen, it was agreed that we start a plaque program. There was specifically somebody in the community that reached out to us and started do their own business where they were going to supply the plaques. I'm, unfortunately, I wasn't here, so I didn't necessarily, I wasn't part of that. And since I, the three years I've been here, we have not had a request for a memorial plaque for them. And with that, I, I know it was brought up during in the March meeting that we wanted an update on where we were with it. And so right now, we have not experienced a need. And we do not have a purveyor still available to us. So if we wanted to continue this program, staff would have to search out a new purveyor to help us set up the program. Anything else?
No, yeah, I think this came up during the fee schedule update because there was, you know, seemed to be an omission potentially. Because the commission had discussed it previously. And so I think Commissioner Hall asked for an update on where we were at that. So we were finally able to find all of the information. And as Ron said, both of us were not here at the time when this item was approved and didn't really have a whole lot of information. So we can hopefully answer any questions that you have.
Am I correct in understanding that no plaques have ever been purchased?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I, I guess, you know, if someone, I, I guess, you know, if a program has existed for seven years, six, six and a half years, whatever. And it's never been engaged or taken advantage of, maybe that means we don't need it. I don't know. I feel bad. It's about dead dogs, but but if no one's engaging this program, maybe it's simply a service that doesn't need to be offered. Yeah. But also, I, maybe people don't know about it. And if they did, maybe, I guess the most generous thing I could say about this is perhaps if people had a high level of awareness about this, then perhaps there would be interest. Although fifteen percent of three hundred is not, it's not exactly a revenue generator. I mean, it's, it's like a nice idea. I don't know, like, there is a there's like a political organization that does like advocacy for orphanage dog things. It's the Dog Pack. And, you know, it may be worthwhile to try to engage them or other dog owner groups. But I don't know, I just, I really think if, if we haven't seen engagement of this program in seven years, maybe we don't. That, that's, that's my thinking at all.
Commissioner Massey?
I agree. I think that, I mean, this is a program. I have to say, I was, I was here seven years ago when this was discussed and I don't remember much about it. But I think we have a pro, and I, and I had the sense that there was the vendor who was interested in providing these and there was also at least one member of the public who was interested in promoting the program. And over the course of time, both have faded away. And it just seems as though we staff, it has got enough else going on. And to take staff resources to create the program from scratch and in particular, find a vendor for this. When there appears to be no public demand for it. And I understand we could try to stimulate some. But I'm, I'm not sure that, in, in our current circumstances, that we need to use resources to stimulate demand for another program that we're not being asked for. So I, I agree with your sentiment about this. I think that we should just let this, just let this go and at some point in the future, we're approached by the public about it and I guess we'll be breaking. That's my thought.
Thank you. So I don't have an opinion on this one. I feel like I don't have enough information.
I'm in agreement with my commissioners. I mean, we can always bring it back if suddenly, you know, the dog owners show up, like the pickleball owners, pickleball players showed up. You know, I think we'll hear about it if people want a program like this. If we haven't heard about it for seven years. It seems like, yeah, a waste of resources at the moment, in time. We all gave our opinions before we did public comment, so we will open it up to public comment. Is anybody on the line?
There is nobody on the line at this time.
Good, saved us. All right, closing public comment. I think we've all given our comments. Any additional thoughts? Okay, great. You have what you, you need from us? Okay, great. All right, item five, election of officers. So we, we do a motion for chair in a second and vote on it. And then we do a nomination for the vice chair and vote on it. So.
I want to make a motion to appoint vice chair.
My second that. If I did, Chair, Vice Chair Walnick is willing to serve.
We, we went out of order.
Oh, oh, no.
Because you missed this meeting last year. So you were supposed to be vice chair this year. So I'm we have just been rotating, honestly.
Yeah, that's how it works generally. It's just, it just goes around. Whoever is at the end of the line becomes it. Well, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. I mean, I've been at most of the meetings. So, okay, I'm just thinking through like the next year of meetings. It's not that much work. I think I would prefer for you to be chair. I make a motion for Commissioner.
Then I withdraw my motion.
Do I have a second for Commissioner Fields to be chair?
Yes.
I'll say.
I'll accept. And then.
Do you think we need to take a, a roll call vote?
Yes, we do. Okay. Yes.
Vice Chair Walnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Massey?
Aye.
Commissioner Chiapi? And Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Motion has passed.
I mean, I don't mind being chair again, because that, that was the rotation. Or we can have our newest member jump in, or would you like a year to wait, or to a year of meetings to see how it goes?
Okay, then I'll make a motion to make vice chair, or vice chair for another year.
I second that.
Can you take the roll call, please?
Okay.
Let me just get this straight.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Massey?
Aye.
Commissioner Chiapi? And Vice Chair Walnick?
Aye.
Just think your motion has passed.
I will always be second in command.
Okay.
You get one more year then, then you get, you get lost again.
All right. We're set on our elections for next year. Reports and announcements. I will be brief, but I do have a couple of exciting things to report out. Our new project manager joined us, King Liang, on July twenty-fourth. And so he's been long awaited and we're very excited to have him. He received his degree in landscape architecture from the Michigan State University. He's been working as project manager for at least ten years throughout the Bay Area. He hails from the county and so has vast experience in parks projects. And so we're very excited to have him on board, working on our projects. So hopefully you will meet him soon. So yes, we're very excited. Just wanted to let you all know that there are only two concerts left for the season. This Thursday, tomorrow, and on next Thursday, August the tenth. And we are planning to unveil the plaque that did not come in time last year for our hundred-year celebration prior to the last concert. So at about five fifty PM, at the last concert on the tenth, we'll be doing the unveiling and we would love for you to join us for that. So that is next Thursday. And then wanted to just coteil some of the information that Chair Fields now has provided about the general plan. So there are several town halls scheduled for the purpose of getting feedback from the community. Part of the general plan is chapter six or section six about conservation, open space and recreation. So very interested to hear public comment and feedback on that. And I, I believe that a lot of different departments will be at the town halls tabling and giving information. So it's a good opportunity for people to come out and ask questions and get some information. So I have some information on the back table for you all. And there's going to be one at every district. So they're rotating and there are different days from August thirty-first to September twenty-fifth at locations like the senior center, the library, the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center, Bayside Old School, Old Gym, and then Wayva School. So there are different locations. So hopefully you can join for one of those. And that's all the updates that I have.
Are there announcements to your commissioners? Sure. At the pre, at the last meeting, there had been an agenda item about renaming of Bay Meadows Park.
Correct. That was postponed.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you know when it's going to come?
That, the request has been withdrawn at this point.
Okay.
So not be coming back in the near future.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Speaking of updates, last time we met, you had a status report on the construction documents for the playgrounds at Central Park and East Hillsdale Park. You have updates of that?
So yes, so we're still at ninety-five percent construction documents at Central Park. And so we're working through those. So there's no change in status from my last update for that. There was an item that went to the council on July twenty-first, July seventeenth. I'm getting my dates confused. July, at the July meeting. For additional services with calendar associates who are working on the project out at East Hillsdale. So that was for additional geotech work and building permit. So that project stalled out a bit. And so they're picking that back up now and King will be working through that. So that stalled out a bit over the last couple of months because we needed some additional services.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else?
No.
All right, meaning adjourned.